About PM. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will be held via the Zoom platform. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties, please contact Conrad Omedo at three, three, six, two, one, four, forty-five, fifteen for support. For tonight's public comments, uh, to address this commission, please indicate you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if by phone, press star nine. The meeting, the meeting host will let me know that you wish to speak. And anyone who speaks at the meeting must give their name and address for the record. So the next order of business is the approval of minutes from the August twenty-third meeting two thousand twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, we got a motion uh, and a second all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
You. Item number three. Mr. Ernie Curry to present an application to rezone a property, zone conditional industrial CI seven ninety-one to light industrial LI. The property in question is located at fourteen fifty-three Industry Drive easterly from the Tucker Street and the Industry Drive intersection and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number one, two, two, four, three, seven. Is the applicant here to present?
Uh, yes.
His request.
Do you believe the applicant, Mr. Ernest Curry is available? Um, I'll go ahead and allow him to speak here.
All right.
I'll promote it to panelists. All right, Mr. Curry, you're, you're able to address the, the commission.
Ryan, do you want to put the map up?
Yeah, let me get the map up. But I have my screen on share there, that's probably not. Okay, that should be coming up here. Can y'all see the most, my screen with the map?
Yes.
All right, perfect.
Yes.
It's your chair, um, if you like, I can give a quick background of this request.
Is Mr. Curry gonna speak or not?
Um, I'm gonna ask him to unmute, let's see.
Yes, sir, I can speak if you need me to.
Yeah, there you go, Mr. Curry.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you guys could hear me or see me, I couldn't see anything on my screen. Um, we, uh, you know, it's been the same business for the last ten or fifteen years. And, uh, you know, we've just signed a new lease about six months ago with the current tenant. Um, I, I, I understand, I guess it was possibly rezoned wrong at some point or zoned wrong at some point, but, uh, you know, it's a, I, I mean, I, I don't know what we need to do, uh, you know, or what, what the problem is, but, uh, I hope that you guys can work with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curry. Um, Conrad, would you like to go ahead and give us the background and tell us the circumstances of this case?
Yes, Commissioner Parker, um, so the, this is a request here to rezone a property as a conditional industrial zoning, zoning, uh, seven, nine, one. It is being requested to be rezoned to a light industrial use. Um, for the record, the property is fourteen fifty-three Industry Drive, and it's identified as one, two, two, four, thirty-seven. Um, the comprehensive plan calls for this property to be general industrial. Staff finds it consistent and recommends approval with consistency statement, consistency statement sheet option one shown in bold and red. Um, just for some background, the conditional rezoning that was approved um, had, uh, certain uses that were allowed and this, uh, rezoning would, um, allow all the permitted uses that are in the light industrial zoning, zoning classification. So we're taking a property that currently has a conditional rezoning with specific tied use to it to now allow a conventional rezoning district to light industrial. Be more than happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
The, uh, first question that occurs to me, um, is can't we fix this with a text amendment? Instead of a rezoning, couldn't we just go to this, uh, current um, zoning and just check the box for, um, uh, a text amendment in the use table?
Um, well, the, to allow a use through a conditional rezoning, staff would have to look at the permitted use table and with the current unified development ordinance, not all uses are allowed through the conditional rezoning process. So staff would have to look through that and we would be going through this similar process. Um, so in our recommendation to the applicant, um, in specific, the current use occurring on the properties is in line, is in alignment with a a bar cocktail lounge type of use, private club for our current U D O. That use was not specified in the original conditional zoning designation of seven, nine, one, which was more for a a, a private club and lounge. So we could have, um, taken this approach through a use change or a text amendment, but as you'll see in the later case that we have, that would still require council review and approval in amending that text, so staff advised and advised the applicant to go for a conventional rezoning, which would be in the consistence with the future land use map designation as well as allow uh, the current use that's occurring on the property, it brings the property into current alignment with the unified development ordinance and allows the property to move forward with what's on the table, um, oh, I want to be, uh, hesitant because it's a conventional rezoning request, but there's a alcohol bureau control permit on the table here for the current business establishment. So by, by having this rezoning request, we're not only permitting the existing use to occur on the, in the, in the current zone and the potential future light industrial zone district, but also other potential uses in the light industrial rezoning request for that conventional rezoning.
So basically, we're just think, we're just cleaning this up.
In retro, yes, sir, uh, Commissioner Patrick, that's a good way to look at it.
Well, let me, let me ask. Currently, it's okay zoned as a private club, but they're looking to rezone it, so it's not a private club. Is that what we're talking about?
In.
Cause right now, did you not say it could operate as a private club?
Currently, the, the, the use that's occurring is what we would classify as a bar cocktail lounge, private club use. And what was approved in the original conditional rezoning was, was not in alignment with that type of use. Um, staff looked at the minutes of the prior council, um, adoption and the, the intent was more of what we would consider like a running a foreign wars club, so not necessarily a commercial establishment, but more of like a, uh, a, a meeting group.
Um, my understanding is that it's still a, a private biker bar, a private bar, a private club of some sort, you know, as landlord, that's, that's, you know, I guess how they operate. Um, and it's, it's been the same way for ten plus years. Um, the only difference is there's been a change of ownership, um, which, which I think, you know, may be a good thing.
So, Mr. Curry, is this a, a, a private club or an open bar to the public?
Uh, my understanding is it's a private club.
That's the way you lease it to them as a private club?
I believe so, I do not have the lease in front of me right now, but I, I believe that is, is how they identify, I'm not sure. Uh, and there has been a change of ownership, so that, that may be something that needs to be, uh, you know, investigated or discussed.
Shouldn't we know that before we vote?
I don't see the difference it makes either way, uh, I mean.
Whether it's a private club or an open bar, you don't think it makes a difference?
Uh, what, what, what's the difference is gonna make is my question.
That's.
The same type of people are gonna be there either way.
Is it a private, is it a private club? Or is it an open bar? There is a difference.
Either, either way, there's gonna be people there drinking alcohol, hanging out on motorcycles.
Can I make a clarification?
It doesn't make a difference to me either way, it does not make a difference to me either way, I'm just telling you the way it has been and the way it is, um, you know, so.
If I can, Mr. Park, Mr. Chairman, the, the light industrial will allow Mr. Curry to do all the uses that he's done in the past and going forward with the private or public club, and that was the suggestion. Sort of cleans it up, it makes light industrial, the uses, should the choice be made to go either way, they'd be able to do that. The applicant just, just provided information, the new tenant is something that had provided information on what they were doing, but the light industrial should, you know, serve both purposes and, and resolve any issues for future tenants or Mr. Curry right now.
Okay, once again, though, if we don't do anything, he can continue the way it is as a private club, right?
No, no, the tenant has, the tenant that has applied.
A new tenant.
Yeah.
The tenant's applied for a bar, according to the.
As opposed to a private club.
That's what it says on the, uh, application for the ABC license.
Yes, sir, so my, my question is what, what, what's your difference? In your opinion, what difference does it make whether it's a private club versus a bar?
Has to be light industrial.
An issue that's, that's up for discussion. You know, what, what, what's the real difference there? It's not, not much in my personal opinion.
So you don't see a difference between a private club and an open bar?
Not, uh, not necessarily, not in that location.
So if it remains as a private club, there should be no difference in your opinion?
If there wasn't a change of ownership and, and a new, uh, alcohol or liquor license being applied for, then yes, sir, you would be correct. If it was the same ownership, yes, but it's not, there's different ownership now. Yeah, I mean, that's the only.
When they purchased it, did they purchase it as a private club? Or did they purchase or, or lease it as an open bar?
I believe that the existing lease expired and we started a lease with them a few months back. The, the current tenant tried to renew her liquor license, and that's when we came into the issue with zoning. It was never an issue before, that's, that's the only reason that we're here at this meeting, sir, because that's an issue.
Okay, so if they were applying for.
Existing lease.
I'm sorry, go, go, go ahead. Don't, don't bother me.
Uh, we, you know, we have an existing lease and she tried to renew her liquor license, she leased it from us as a bar or private club, whatever. Um, and she, she's, was told she cannot do that because the zoning was, was incorrect, which is operated about the same in my opinion for the last ten years. You know, there's been, uh, fundraisers, bars, concerts, everything there. Um, it, it's, it will operate no different than it did ten year, for the last ten years than it, than it will if you approve this, in my opinion personally.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking is, if they leased it as a private club and that was okay, you're saying the ABC permit wouldn't be allowed?
But with the current zoning is my understanding that it would not be allowed.
As a private club, it would not be allowed?
I'm not sure, but.
Once again, shouldn't we know this before we vote?
My question is what difference does it really make?
Well, ask the ABC board, that's what I'm wanting to know. Does it make a difference if they're wanting to continue the lease? As a private club, is there a reason why the ABC board would not allow the license? If nothing's changed except the ownership, if it's a private club, the old owners got a permit for a private club. Are you saying that the new owners can't get a permit for a private club? Or is it that the new owners want to open it up as an open bar and that's why they can't get the permit?
Yes, sir.
And if you're telling me you don't know, then I'm thinking we should know before we vote.
Yes, sir, I, I understand that completely, um. My, my understanding, um, with the lady I spoke with from the city in zoning is that, uh, she said it's been wrong for a few years. Um, and she, she went back and did a lot of research. Um, she told me that she didn't think it was a big deal, but that we had to change the zoning because the zoning there did not allow an, an open bar or, or whatever, and that, that, you know, we can switch it to light industrial. Um, so that's my only request, um.
But would it allow it for a private club?
I have no idea.
Comrade, you should be a micro, comrade should be able to answer that.
I, I'll be glad, I, I, I'll be glad to speak. The, the conditional use permit that is in place currently, uh, specifically allows for a private club.
Okay, so.
Okay, the request.
Go ahead and operate it as a private club without a study.
That's correct, the request we received is also in your packet is to be used as a bar, a public bar, diff, so they're, they're, they're in non-compliance with their original, uh, conditional use permit. And that's their request, so we're just trying to help them do what they, yeah, we're just trying to help them do what they've requested. Yeah, currently, right now, it's only approved, only approved by conditional use permit to be a private club.
Private bar.
Bar, excuse me, yeah. Private bar, yeah, uh, but, so when they came to us as a request to be a bar, we're like, that's not.
Change needs to be made.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir, sorry for the confusion.
Mister Nun, Mister Nun, you're saying then you use the word public bar?
A bar, excuse me, a bar, yes, different from what it is.
This is, I think this is the crux of Mr. Black's question, is it?
Yes.
Uh, an open bar, can I drive over there and drink a beer if I'm not a member of this private club? If we change this zoning, can I go get a beer?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's why we're going to the light industrial allows that to occur. And they can do either, they, they've been presented to us that it's going to be different than what it was before, it's gonna be different from the private club bar, it's going to be a bar. That's all it was presented to us.
Open public bar.
That's what was presented to us in the application.
And I want to apologize, this is my first meeting with you guys, my first experience with anything like this. Um, you know, I am a real estate agent, uh, been working with the family here for two years, uh, managing properties, but this is my first experience with any meeting or any zoning issue. So, um, I'm sorry for any inexperiences or, uh, you know, knowledge I may not have that you guys have.
So, uh, we're just, the request is, helps the applicant do what they requested to do. That, that's to be clear about that, yes.
May I ask a question, is the difference that before when they were, uh, or are a private club or lodge, they didn't have a liquor license, is the difference now they need a liquor license or they had one in both situations?
All, all we are asked as a city on any, any establishments like this is are they in compliance with the zoning regulations? And that's what we've been asked, that's what we've been asked to do on this, and their application for a bar, they're not in compliance with the existing use, conditional use permit. So to get them in compliance with zoning, the light industrial does that.
Light industrial also fits the rest of the area, everything around that area is light industrial, not conditional.
Very good point.
Correct, and, and the land use plan supports that, and it would, it would be, it would be compliant with that, so.
So, should the current owner decide to sell to the aluminum plant that's right next door for expansion, they'd already be zoned. Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Are there any other comments from the, uh, board, um, Ryan, go ahead?
I guess my question is for the city, um, reading through the minutes, thank you all for finding those from back in two thousand, whenever it was that this was originally approved. Um, there, there is a distinction between a private club and a bar, um, in this county and, and city and state. Um, but you all have no problem with just switching this from a private club to a bar, um, via this mechanism?
If the zoning is appropriate, correct. It's, it's allowed use, yes, they, they allow, if, if the light industrial is approved, then it, then it's in compliance, yes.
Cause I, I guess I'm a little curious, um, we weren't in the room then, um, why was this approved as a private club then and not as a bar at that time?
I think it was just the request, the applicant's request at that time, from the minutes, I mean, that, sort of like today, we, we received the request for a bar and processed that, that's the only thing I could suggest. It, it came in with that request.
Cause there, there's a ethical difference, I guess, right, of a private club versus an open bar. Um, and, and who, who comes in and who's allowed, and so I see John's point of making this a switch. Um, but there's also precedence the way this has been operating, uh, recently. Um, it seems like a continuation of how it's been operating. So it's interesting, but I'm, I'm ready to support it.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem, I just wanted a clarification because it, it sounded like nobody wanted to say, hey, we're a, we're a private club, but we want to be a bar now. I never heard anybody actually say that, it was kind of like suggested or, or kind of hidden in there, I just wanted somebody to say, hey, they want to be a bar, they're, you know, and, uh, I just wanted somebody to step up and say that.
Yeah, I was waiting for that too, I think I said that.
Um, I, no, it wasn't said until at the very end. But we're, we're good to go whenever anybody's wanting to, uh, make a motion.
James, do you have anything to say?
No, sir, it's pretty easy to me.
Bill, anything? Nothing from Bill, okay. Um, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, I'll, I'll do it.
Do we need a public comment first?
Do we have any?
Stan's recommendation.
Chairman, uh, Parker, I don't see anyone in the, in the public raising their hands, um, I haven't received any calls to speak on this item.
The city said, said, said to rezonate, John.
That recommends a.
It's the recommendation, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I'll do it. Uh, I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezonate from conditional industrial CI seven ninety-one to light industrial LI. The property in question is located at fourteen fifty-three Industry Drive easterly from the Tucker Street and Industry Drive intersection and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number one, two, two, four, three, seven. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have industrial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent industrial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for the industrial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any questions?
No.
Ready to vote, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you for Mr., for being here, Mr. Curry.
Yes, sir, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Okay. Next item is item four. Ms. Penny Fogelman to present an application to rezone property zoned medium density residential M D R and general business C B to general business G B. The property is in question is located sixteen twenty South Church Street, uh, southeast of the intersection of South O'Neal and South Church Street and consists of Alamance County Tax Map Number one, two, one, six, eight, three. Is Penny Fogelman in the meeting?
Chairman Parker, do you see, uh, Max Fogelman, let me bring him into panelist here.
Okay.
And then no Penny, I'm not sure if Penny is calling in. Yes, Mr. Fogelman to unmute.
It's, uh, one deed. I've had it for about forty-two year, actually. Uh, would like to get it commercial on the back. Uh, the front is the used car lot. The back is the, uh, little bit wider in the back than it is in the front. And it's just one deed, like I say, and John Patterson fixed that up in nineteen ninety, I believe it was. Uh, and of course, he's deceased now, but, uh, I'd like to get that done for you guys. Appreciate it if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Fogelman.
Yes, sir.
This, um, matter can, uh, seems to be, um, identical to, uh, our Biscuitville corner just down the street where it was zoned one thing in the front and, and something in the back. And we zoned it all, um, one thing, so looks like the same thing as Biscuitville, is that, uh, the way you see it, Conrad?
Similar request, um, very similar, uh, the, this property though, um, is, is a different request than just across the street here. Um, staff again is, is recommending approval of this request through option one in bold and red. Um, we see it as consistent with the land use plan. And, you know, if there are any questions on our, on our end, more than happy to answer.
Any questions from the board on this matter?
No. Is there any, any calls or any letters from the public?
Staff did, yeah, we did receive one inquiry from one of the neighbors there and just asking, you know, what, what was, what was the request and just respond to them individually, let them know what the request is. Um, if I may point out a technical correction on the consistency statement sheet, the correct reference should reference the property sixteen twenty South Church Street and rezoning twenty-one dash zero, one, four. Apologize for that, uh, technical error there.
Say that one more time, Conrad.
At the top of your consistency statements sheet, just a technical correction, but the reference property is sixteen twenty South Church Street, rezoning twenty-one dash, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Now I found it. Are there any other comments or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Um, I would make a motion to recommend the approval of the request to rezone a property zoned medium density residential and general, and general business to general business. Uh, the property in question is located sixteen twenty South Church Street, southeast from the intersection of South O'Neal Street and South Church Street and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number one, two, one, six, eight, three. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have residential and commercial uses. The question is, the request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion or question? All right, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye, raising your right hand, aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Fogelman.
Yes, sir.
All right, item number five. Mrs. Liz, Liz Ainge, I think I said that right, to present an application to rezone property zoned medium density residential M D R, high density residential H D R and light industrial L I to high density residential. The property in question is located on Plantation Drive northwest of the intersection of Corey Drive uh, and Plantation Drive and nineteen thirty Tucker Street, north of the intersection of Tucker Street and Corey Drive and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number one, two, two, five, two, two, and one, two, two, four, four, seven. Is the presenter in the meeting?
Good.
Yes, good evening. I'm Beth Blackman, I am here filling in for Liz Ange, I am with Timmons Group, uh, fifty-four, ten Trinity Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Uh, we're working with the developer for this property. Um, the future land use map, uh, I know Conrad had some information in his presentation that it's not, um, necessarily consistent with the, uh, mix of traditional residential and, uh, industrial that is currently dividing this property. But it is, would provide a good transition from the existing. would provide a good transition from the existing single family that is located, um, on one side of this development on this property and the business and industrial uses that are on the other side. And so providing some, some type of higher density residential provides a good transition between those current uses that we have. And so we would like your support for this rezoning. And please let me know if you have any questions.
I have one, Richard.
Go ahead.
Um, with, do, do you have a, uh, is there a developer in place for this? So do, do we know what kind of apartments is going to be or is this going to be townhomes or what exactly is the intent?
Um, so that the intent is, has been in fluctuations. We have a developer who is working. So he is not a end user. And so he is trying to gauge interest and we have talked about townhomes. Uh, I don't really think it would be apartments. I mean, that's obviously a possibility. Um, they have bounced around quite a few different ideas. And so this zoning district just provides some flexibility, um, to set up some different uses depending on how it ends up going with the, whatever end user there ends up being.
Conrad, how's it currently zone?
The current zoning, there's, there's, it's got some light industrial. There's two properties. If you all can see my map here, we got light industrial, medium density residential and high density residential for this, this property here. And then we have this other property which is own medium density residential.
Okay.
And, and there's also a stream and a floodplain that sort of divides on the, um, northeastern side of the site. Uh, yes, there.
Oh, the bulk of the land is already high density residential. Is that true?
No, no.
No, the bulk is industrial.
Oh, industrial, okay. So where's the high density residential on your map, Conrad?
The orange.
Oh, okay, okay. I missed that on my map.
Yeah, and, and that's actually the part that's all in the floodplain.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you can't build anything there anyway?
Right.
Okay, okay. I just needed clarification. I was just confused. I'm sorry.
No, it's, and it's odd to have a property that splits on, well, actually, I guess your case previously was also that way.
I'm going to guess that the floodplain is a creep coming down between the MDR Elder Way area and, uh, the one twenty-two, five, twenty-two parcel. And it comes along and follows out and goes underneath Plantation Drive just about at Corporation Parkway. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It, it follows the property line where it's curvy and then it cuts across, um, kind of where that zoning line changes.
And that's really advantageous. That creates a whole another buffer between the different.
Correct, right. Yeah, and, and depending on the use and the adjacent zoning, you know, the, a buffer would be required, but you're going to have quite a bit of natural built-in buffer as well.
And is your opinion that the, uh?
Where will you have that?
Pardon me?
You have some say, Bill?
Beth, where is this property from?
Where will be access? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, where's the access from?
Um, Corey Drive and, uh, Tucker Street.
Conrad, can I jump in for a second?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mark is also the applicant, Chairman Parker.
Hey. Yes, thank you. Um, Mark Eisenby's fifteen twenty-six Greenwood Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, two, seven, six, oh, eight. Um, and my company's old East Properties and yes, I'm the developer and we have been working on the site for several months. Uh, we've looked at any number of different uses, everything from industrial to self-storage to various types of residential, including apartments, townhomes and single-family detached. And, uh, what we are really settling in on is a build for rent option. Uh, so it would be, uh, a single family, each unit would be, uh, detached for single-family purposes or uses, but, uh, they would all have private yards. Uh, they would be smaller units. Uh, so they would be more affordable, but the rents would be higher than what we'd find in uh, garden-style apartments. Um, and I, I think that with this location being so close to town, so close to the, the outlet village, having those additional rooftops, uh, within walking distance and our, our intent is to provide uh, connect to the Greenway system and, uh, provide an avenue to get over to the, the, the outlet village would really help, um, with those businesses that, that, that are located there and really help establish that as, as a viable, long-term commercial hub. Um, we know that there's a huge housing, housing shortage. Uh, this, right now in the Southern High School District, there's only a, a half a month of supply of resales. And, but we're, we're trying to provide, um, a product that will attract, uh, a number of different users. We, we find that in this type of product, we, most of the renters end up being, uh, millennial, young millennial families who, you know, want their own yard for their young kids. Downsizers, so boomers that, uh, want to sell their larger home, but don't want to move into apartments. And, uh, a huge component is divorcees. Uh, and so we think that this, this proximity, uh, to town and, uh, access to the interstate, that this would be a, a really good solution for, uh, for this area.
Mark, uh, Chairman Parker here, uh, would you? I mean, I'm sure if this project gets underway, you'll meet all the requirements, but, you know, some of the homeowners, I'm sure are, are worried maybe about security, um, lighting, fencing, you know, things that would hold this neighborhood together or will there just be open access to walk across to Elder Way or something?
I think that's, that's something we can certainly, uh, discuss. We, I, I think that it would be appropriate for, um, some kind of fencing. We're already planning a, a, a large landscape buffer. Um, so that's, that's open for, um, discussion. We're going to hold a, a neighborhood meeting next month. And we, we would definitely want to get the, the input from resident. I've spoken to a couple of them, but want to get, make sure we get the input from those residents, uh, back along Elder Way. That was one of the, frankly, one of the concerns about, uh, an industrial use here or, uh, self-storage facility. Um, we felt that like a, a residential component was going to be a, uh, a more similar use and, um, be less of a nuisance. Uh, and so plus with the fact that being rental, there's nothing more discouraging than when you develop a community and you drive back through it in a few years and you find that people aren't, homeowners aren't taking care of their, their property. Uh, with it all being managed by a, a management company, the, the external, the, the outsides of the houses would be covered, the yards, all the, the, the maintenance areas, all the common areas would be covered under the, uh, the, the maintenance agreement and management, uh, company. So there's going to be consistency there and how well-kept the, the neighborhood is. Plus there are tighter rules and regulations associated with, uh, a rental community than with a, um, you know, for sale homeowners association. So we feel like that would be a, that they would be very good neighbors. And from what I've heard about the, uh, the Ambley Trace residence, the apartment, the new apartment complex behind it, that they're already good residents are, are good neighbors. I think that ours would be as good, if, if, if not better, given the, the makeup of, of, of this kind of renter.
Have you had any contact with the neighbors that are in the, uh, medium density district right there that you're going to back up to the?
A couple, yeah, a, a, a couple, yes. And you, one, one of the concerns is, um, you know, I said, these are all single-story units. Um, so I, I know that having three stories looming over the neighborhood was going to be a, a, a concern.
My, my grandmother used to live in that neighborhood and, uh, I think what you're proposing to do is outstanding. I think it's the perfect transition. That's just my opinion.
Well, and that's, that's the key is finding something that is a transition that, um, so you're not going to have a, an abrupt change from the commercial and light industrial back to more of your traditional residential.
I have, uh, read about these, uh, for rent neighborhoods in my trade journals. I'm in this business, so.
Yep.
Uh, I've, I've read about them. They seem to be a most popular, uh, alternative nowadays in the housing market and, um, more and more neighborhoods are being built this way. So, um, if it all comes to pass, I, I'll be glad to be a part of it.
Well, that's, that's, that's great to hear. My, I, I know there's concerns about apartments, given that it's high-density residential, but there's, given this is a new kind of product and a new solution for the, the housing industry, it, it doesn't really fit neatly into one of the existing zoning categories. Um, and I've, I've talked to a number of, of different groups and have narrowed, narrowed things down a bit to, um, those that are, have the, the, the financial wherewithal to, to finish the project in a timely basis. Uh, but also the experience on the, the home building side to, uh, make sure that we're building a quality product. Actually, I've got an example here of what the, the homes would look like if I can share the screen. If, if that's something.
Mr. Parker and Chair, if I can just add, it's fine if the applicant wants to do that. You, we're just considering the rezoning, but certainly can, can do whatever the applicant wants. I just want to be clear that he's not committing to any conditions or anything. This is a straight rezoning request.
Understood.
That's fine.
Maybe you can hold your photograph for another meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's have some more questions. Uh, Mr. Black, uh, Mr. Roan, do you have any questions, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
I'm done.
Okay.
My only, um, my only concern is that I would, I would have appreciated more had they already had their meeting with the neighbors and gotten a feel for what the neighbors were thinking prior to coming here. I'd prefer to wait till after the neighborhood meeting and kind of get a feel for, uh, the response there. That's just the only thing, uh, I, I, you know, personally, I'd table it until after they've had their neighborhood meeting and uh, the people that are going to be living right beside the area has a, a chance to hear him out and, um, hopefully enjoy his vision.
That's, that's, that's certainly a fair request. It's, it's, I think, I think some of it has been that this, we have, we have gone back and forth um, with, because there are so many potentially viable uses here that, um, we've, we've sort of come full circle now back to our original, uh, intent for, for the, for the property. And I just didn't want to pull the plug last minute, but knowing that there's not going to be a council meeting next month. Uh, we felt like there, there was time to, uh, I wanted to also get, I also wanted to get your opinion on this kind of concept because it is new and it hasn't really been done in, in the area before. Um, I, I wasn't even sure if it's, if it was something that, that would be appealing to you.
To me, what you're doing is you're giving like the perfect transition piece from a residential neighborhood to a light industrial type, uh, zoning. And that it's not three stories tall.
Right.
Uh, it's, 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 it's on one level, um, which attracts both, uh, young and old.
Uh, sure.
I've never seen anything like it. I think it'd be great.
Yeah, they're becoming more popular, Jim, uh, across the country.
But my question is, have you had any conversations with the neighbors? Has anybody, uh, called the city, Conrad, Mike?
Chairman, Chairman Parker and Commissioner Patrick. Yeah, we've got, we've had some discussions with some of the neighbors in the community. And we do have three folks that have their hands, raised hands to speak on this item when given the opportunity to do so.
May I ask a question of Mr. Eisenby's? Um, if I understood correctly, you said you are zeroing in on this idea, but it's not a confirmed plan, is it? It's just one of many ideas you're thinking of?
No, I think that, no, now we've, we've, we've confirmed that, um, this is the direction we feel would be best suited for the property.
But once the zoning is.
Sorry, but what's starting, right, but what we're zeroing in on is the specific builder and the specific product. Um, because there are slight variations, uh, based, uh, different companies are implementing this different ways. And, um, they all have their, their own areas of expertise and we want to make sure that it's something that we could be, that, that it's done right the first time.
But if the zoning were changed, you could still change your mind and not build that. You could build something else.
Well, that's, that's the thing. My, like some, I guess somebody could. I, my, my background and experience is uh, on the residential side, single-family townhomes. Uh, it's, it's not with apartments. So I certainly understand that concern and I had asked uh, staff earlier if there was a way to, um, if there was a way to proceed with a, a conditional rezoning, because I'd be, I'd, I'd be glad to limit, uh, some of the, the, the design characteristics. I mean, happy to say that it couldn't be more than, than two stories. Uh, but there's no, doesn't appear to be any mechanism to, to implement that.
Mark, you can use this mic now and you, that's an offer by you. You're the applicant. If you'd like to come back with an offer of conditional. I mean, that is a process, but at the time, if I recall, you were still putting things together.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. But yeah, that's, yeah, so I would have to, would I come back to the planning commission for that?
Yes, sir. If that's, if that was your request, yes, you'd come right, just like this process after you go do your neighborhood meeting, you come back through this process. If that's what you want to do.
Is the, is the, is the planning commission meeting next month? You know, the council is not.
In December, it'll have to be a different date because that's the holiday, but we, we can look at it, yes.
Yeah, we'll meet.
If you can get your application complete, it's, it's going to be due fairly soon after this meeting.
Is it, is it an amendment to the, or is it a whole new application?
Well, it's a new application, but Mark, you've got to know, you, when you get into conditional zoning, that like, like you're talking now, wanting to present to the board, don't let me speak for you. You're, you're committing to, that's all you can do on that property.
I understand.
Versus a HDR which allows you flexibility to, you know, fine tune and shape some of the things that you're thinking of, so.
No, that's right, but I, I also, I mean, I understand that, that it is a concern of the neighbors and. No, that's right, but I I also, I mean, I understand that that it is a concern of the neighbors and probably uh the staff and and some of the commissioners that um, you know, we we rezone this H H high density with the full intent of uh building the the product that I described, but I get hit by a bu- I get hit by a bus and somebody else comes in and you know, it's already been, then it's then it's out of your hands and we, I want to protect you guys too.
Let's um, let's stop this discussion a moment and Conrad, would you let in some of these neighbors that are waiting and let's hear what some of them have to say before we proceed.
Yes, sir. So first on my list, I have Corey Jordan Thornton followed, who then Kathy Holland will then follow Ms. Corey. I'll go ahead and promote her to a panelist.
Corey, if you'll unmute yourself and uh start your comments.
This is Corey Thornton and my husband Nathan. We live at nineteen thirty four A Tucker Street. Our tax identification number is one, two, two, four, four, nine. So we live at the end of the driveway off of Tucker Street and they have been cutting some trees down and whatnot almost directly in front of our front door. And we're just wondering if they build these apartments or townhomes, et cetera, where the entrance is going to be? Like, are they going to be right in front of our house?
And you're on Tucker Street, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mark. Where's your main entrance?
Well, let's see, the main entrance would be off of Corey down by Plant uh by the plantation drive intersection. There's a little, there's a little sliver of a parcel there uh by that corner and that's where we would have the the main boulevard entrance. So.
Off plantation?
No, it would be, there's a right next to, it hit, there's a little sliver right in between Corey and the property line. I don't know if I can draw on this or not.
So you're going to have access off of Tucker Street and plantation, correct?
Uh, no, not plantation. That that that's going to be too close to the intersection of Corey. The, it would be um can I draw on this to show?
Conrad, can you pull up the, can we annotate on there if you pull up the uh?
Yeah, let me go ahead and I'll bring the arrow on. Okay, so here's the. You're you're welcome to use annotate on this and draw. Um, just as a reminder, we're not, the 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 request is for a conventional rezoning to HDR and so just to for the record there.
Sorry. It would be in this area would be the main entrance. There would be a secondary access through this property. There would be, there would be no houses uh along there. It would just be sort of a a back entrance and give it, given the uh that we were over the, I think it's pretty small threshold for number of units where second, second access is is required for for fire, but the main, the main entrance would be down here on on Corey.
Okay, so there would be that second entrance that you have coming in off of Tucker Street.
Correct.
That is um a house, two condos, and then two more houses down there. So we have a driveway that goes all the way down and we're the last house on that corner. So where your first entrance is. How far do you know like the whereabouts where the first entrance is cutting through and the second entrance is cutting through? Because the land that you guys are clearing up up until the um.
We're not clearing it. We're not clearing anything.
Well, y'all have cleared a lot of trees so far in front of our driveway.
Yes, you have.
We have.
We have.
Okay, well, I mean, we're looking at it and we have pictures and we have pictures of the guys out here and everything, so we, there is land.
Okay, but we're not, we we we've not.
Geotech might have gone out and they have to get their drill rigs around.
Samples and they did clear a road through there.
Okay, through there, okay.
And um, so that's why, that's why I'm getting at uh, the clearing has happened right in front of our house. So I mean, yeah, people cleared through the woods to get through different ways and stuff, but you got that second entrance coming down that driveway where you say that there's only a few uh houses down there, but yeah, we are one of those few houses. And uh, we're covered by those woods or whatever. And if the second entrance is coming through there, I want to figure out how you guys are planning on. Yeah, are we going to pave the driveway? Are we going to branch it out? Because there's also a creek that runs behind those condos and stuff.
So if if you're one of the two properties that are kind of internal to the site or surrounded by the 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 future development or whatever form it takes, it would still provide you all um driveway access.
We're fine with the driveway access. We're asking about the privacy. Because we are a single family home and if you're putting all these houses or condos in front of us, how are we going to separate all that from us? Like someone said earlier, the lights, the sound, everything.
Right, and and buffers are required and I'm sure that the ordinance requires lighting to be um shielded so that it's it's directional versus uh spilling over on the adjacent properties. And you know, we want to to work it out so that everything uh the residents that would, you know, future live there and and y'all can all be happy.
Conrad, could you uh uh show us where uh Corey's property is?
We are.
On the map.
What what's the address again? I'm sorry, Corey.
It's one, uh, it's nineteen thirty four A Tucker Street. And uh, if you need our text ID.
It's right next door.
Oh, no, 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 we're we're the very last one. Go back one more.
Yeah, so the nineteen, the nineteen thirty four, that's at the top of the road. We're A, if you go down that gravel driveway, we're the last house.
This one right here? Okay, right here, okay.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay. So we're in that corner. We butt up against um industry or not industry, uh, Corey Drive, so that um that industry tool or whatever the new owners over there, they're in our backyard pretty much. So they, we already know that the driveway could be used through a, like a
We have the D to ease it.
Yeah, we have a D to easement, but we we were aware that the driveway could be used as a pull through eventually. But that second entrance, I just trying to figure out what y'all's plan were and the first entrance, how it was going to cut through. Because we're not too far from that cut through.
Were were you more concerned about the entrance off of Corey or Tucker?
More concerned with Tucker. Please, sorry, uh, I got a seven month old.
Well, I mean, we'll have to um we'll have to, we'll have to address that with you. We um, we want to provide, we want to provide as as much landscaping and undisturbed buffers uh as as we can. Um, Conrad, if it was, I mean, it's it's currently zoned and industrial. How much if we were going in, putting in a warehouse or a manufacturing facility, how much buffer would we have to leave?
Okay, so what the U D O has to to Ms. Blackman's point, you know, the U D O, we would, staff would be evaluating a site specific development through the technical review committee. Either for multifamily or for a use that's permitted by right on this property. The the photo, so staff evaluates in terms, and I heard lighting come up before, lighting is photo lumens. And we measure that from the property to the adjacent properties. And right now, if you were next to a single family residential u- unit or zone property, it would be one point oh foot candles at the property line. So that would be for either a high density residential permitted use or for an industrial property. We would be looking at a very low photo photo lumen, if you will, at that property line. When we look at the buffer requirements from L I to M D R, it's a type D buffer. And the type D buffer has a buffer width of forty foot. So it'll be a forty foot wide buffer requirement from the, from an M D R property. From, uh, let's see, that would be L I, an H D R to an M D R would be a type B buffer, so that would be a twenty foot buffer width requirement.
Mr. Parker? Chairman Parker?
Yes.
Is it, is it possible for us to just table this? I I agree with John Black. I think the meeting needs to be happened. I I love the idea, but it's also about the neighbors. Uh, and maybe some concessions can be made. I don't know what's some something hashed out uh rather than doing it in this forum. Like a private meeting with the residents and the developer, I think it's a great idea.
I love that idea.
Yeah, I I think that's that's going to happen uh based on what Mark says.
Yep.
Uh, we do, how many other people do we actually have on the phone right this minute?
Um, I've got two other folks and another person that um is a Spanish speaker that I can, I can address also.
Okay. Do you want to hear these two people commissioners or just wait till the whole neighborhood meeting is totally over?
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, I would like, I'd like to go with the, my initial comment. Let have the let them have their neighborhood meeting first. Uh, because there, there's going to be a lot of questions and this is why you want to have that beforehand, because we can sit here and make plans. When you get to the neighbors, all the questions will come out, filter through there, uh, you know, address those problems that can be addressed, uh, and then come back to us.
Okay. Do you? Commissioners agree?
Do you, do you need me to make that in the motion to uh table this until our next stated meeting?
Well, we, yeah, until after the neighborhood meeting.
Right.
Yes.
Second.
Let's have a motion to table this. John, go ahead.
I make a motion that we table this until after the um neighborhood meeting has uh happened uh and we will address it at our next communication uh to that. So after their meeting, whatever our next meeting is, we'll address it there.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Mark.
Time. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Black. It is at least nice to know what what he's got planned. And if he does want to make that uh new application, Mike, you help him out and so that we have a whole new application next go round and not something that's too vague.
Yes, sir, we will.
Much meaning. Now, will you, will any of the staff go to the neighborhood meeting?
We don't uh attend those by principle or standard because we don't want to be any influence or direction on the meeting. It's completely on the applicant.
Okay.
We we do help them encourage and encourage them to do it, yes.
Okay. All right, uh, item number six. Um, conditional rezoning twenty one dash zero, 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 two. Mr. Frank Longest to present an application of an amendment to an existing conditional business C B zoned property to allow for office, medical and pharmacy uses and to eliminate prior square footage limitations of said uses within the existing building. The property in question is located at three seventy eight Harden Street easterly from the Harden Street and Maple Avenue intersection and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number one, three, three, one, four, two. Is Mr. Longest here?
Here. Oh, Mr., I do see a Frank in the.
That's right, I see him.
Yeah, let me go ahead and promote him to a panelist. And uh, Ms. Corey, I do have your address on, and we'll make sure to let uh Mr. Eisenbys know you're about the neighborhood meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name for the record is Frank Longest. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hope Longest Wall, Blakes and Mosley of Burlington. Our address is thirty four fifty three Forestdale Drive. I hope the purpose of our application will be met favorably. I hope it won't take too long. Let me just try to surmise real quick. There is a current nice brick veneer structure building at this location which is very close to the intersection of Maple Avenue. In the past, this building was used for pharmaceutical purposes. And at this point in time, there is no pharmacy there. The existing landowner is Cochran Family Enterprises who did lease property to a pharmacy that they were involved in. The other applicant and potential user is Kimbed. A company that's in the southeast that develops and operates medical offices. Part of that is outpatient, part of it is medical related. And so the definition that was in the prior conditional use need to be amended to allow for medical office use. Under the prior conditional use, medical use was not permitted. So we're asking for technically an amendment to the business conditional use to allow for the office uh for medical use purposes. Uh, going back to the two thousand and six minutes, somehow another, the building got larger than was permitted under the former uh pharmacy use under the five prior B two or neighborhood business. So that's why we're asking for the amendment to do away with any restrictions as to minimum size. There is no plan to expand the building. The building will be the same. The main thing will be the change of the use to allow for medical office use. You'll notice uh going back to the west toward Maple Avenue, the property that adjoins this property to the west is a mini storage warehouse facility. The other properties, as you can see, are zone uh neighborhood business. And then to the rear, you have industrial use. Uh, the building is not that far from the shopping center or food line. And then if you look at the corner there on Harden Street and Maple Avenue, there is some new strip uh buildings that have been built along for uh shopping commercial use. And then, of course, you also have the corner property where it's Biscuit Bill.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Uh, i- is this as simple as uh, and this is for uh Conrad and Mike. Is this, is they're going to take a pharmacy and turn it into a doctor's office? And it needs to be rezoned so it meets, so it meets that requirement, just like our first case this evening?
The very similar conditional use permit that's in place does not allow that. So that's all they're doing is making amendment to that to allow it to to occur. That that's.
So this is almost identical to what we did with the with the private club slash bar.
Somewhat, yes. Somewhat, yes, yes.
Okay.
Somewhat.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Longest, um, will this be a, uh, kind of like what they call a dock in a box? Kind of deal like, um, medical care?
My understanding and talking with the representatives of the potential buyer and user of the property is their concept is healthcare given to a wide populace. And the populace they're trying to really scope in on is more than likely Medicare uh, senior citizens.
Okay. Is it gonna be open twenty-four se- uh, what, what are the hours?
I have no idea what the hours are, sir, and, and that's not been discussed.
So for all we know, this could be open at ten or eleven at night. Uh, on Sunday night, we don't know, correct?
I cannot answer that question. I don't know. Not trying to dodge you, I just didn't think about that.
Well, I, I was thinking the neighbors might be concerned whether or not people will be driving in and out at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night. Or not, uh, it, to me, it would be, it would be something I'd like to know.
Well, again, I cannot answer that and I don't want to speculate. I was just told that the idea is to provide medical services to the wide range of the public. But for particular targeting toward, uh, senior citizens and those people who are probably under cared for now.
Mike, is there been any phone calls?
We had one, we had, we had one Conrad, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, we, we received a phone call from the neighbor just to the east of this property. And had some questions about traffic and accidents and Brian Tennant with Transportation assisted them and discussed some of the in, the now, the analysis there, um, but there was no further follow-up question, uh, discussion with that property owner.
Okay.
Uh, Mike, uh, this would not be considered spot zoning, would it?
No, sir, this is an amendment to an existing, it's already allowed, it's already allowed by zoning permit, conditional use permit. It's just allowing the use that, that wasn't previously allowed.
Okay. All right.
So it's already been, it's already an approved permit, you're just making an amendment to that permit.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Uh, how strongly do you feel about, uh, the hours of operation?
Um, well, in, in my opinion, and that's just all it is, is that unless I'm comfortable knowing that it wouldn't be disruptive of the neighborhood until I, until I know, I wouldn't feel, um, comfortable voting for this. Uh, lights, traffic, hours, yeah, I would like to know. So I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on it until we know that.
Okay.
Well, to counter that, I mean, it was a pharmacy. And so there's a long precedent of this exact type of situation of people coming and going in pharmacies can be open late. So it's a.
But I don't know what it was at the time.
Right now, Patrick, I mean, anything that goes in there is better than an empty building, in my opinion.
I would understand that.
Well, well, don't, don't, don't mix up. The, the hours, I'm pretty comfortable with the hours. And I, I, I respect your opinion, but I don't know any doctor's offices, they're sitting all night or midnight, uh, but that could happen. So.
Well, it could.
I think it's simple.
Most people late at night go to the emergency room anyway.
Correct. And this is a Medicare.
I'm wondering if this is a Medicare or something like that. Um, somebody getting late at night, having to go there. Of course, they might not be open late at night, but we don't know.
Well, I mean, I think, I think there's a tremendous need for what they're attempting to do or what they're wanting to do there.
I'm not doubting that. I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing. Just be, but because of the people that live around it, I think we have a due diligence to make sure that, you know, everybody meets a happy, uh, end in there.
Mr. Chairman, I may allow to speak. I, I'm not aware of any intent to make this a dock in the box or an emergency stop. I was told that it's being designed to provide medical outpatient services. To try to provide total care to the scope of an element in the population that they see has a need to be met. And that is your Medicare, your senior citizens, basically sixty-five and older. You'll find that more and more doctors that stay in time are not providing Medicare or excluding that. And therefore they see an opening and a need. I do not anticipate that anybody in a professional medical otherwise would be operating twenty-four hours a day. They're probably operating maybe seven days a week. Could hope it happened, but I cannot say because I didn't ask, didn't think, and certainly wouldn't express to me that it would be an emergency clinic that would present some type of traffic problems. It's a building that's almost a million, four hundred thousand dollars is sitting there. And you have a use for a building that fits the building. It fits incompatible with the adjoining properties. Look at the zoning of the adjoining properties. That's neighborhood business. So it's not like a residential building is going to be there forever that you need to worry about a residence. You need to look at the compatibility of the zoning and the zoning map.
Well, I'm glad you feel comfortable that way. I'm just more concerned about the people that do live around it. And that's just, that's my feeling. So I, and I'm only one vote, so, you know, I, I'd say go ahead and, uh, proceed as you all would like to.
Call the question, Chairman. If there's no more discussion.
Any further comments? William, Lee, anybody, Joan? If not, do I hear a motion on this item?
Uh, so move, move. Uh, I make a motion to recommend the approval of the request to amend an existing conditional business C B eight thirty-six zone property to allow for office comma medical and pharmacy uses. And to eliminate prior square footage limitations of said uses within the existing building. Property in question is located at three seventy-eight Harden Street, easterly from the Harden Street and Maple Avenue intersection. And consists of Alamance County Tax, Tax Identification Number one, three, three, one, four, two. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have residential and commercial uses. The resident request is compatible with the adjacent residential, commercial and industrial uses. This action is reasonable and the public interest in that comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area, the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Ryan. Are there any other comments concerning this item? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye. Hold them up here, let's count them. Hold them up. One, two, three, four, five, six. All opposed? One. Okay, so, uh, Bill, which, did you vote opposed or, uh, for?
Four.
Say again, Bill?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Parker was.
For the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Conrad.
Just to confirm, the Commissioner Black is the only in opposition?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay. All right. Uh, before we proceed, I would like to suggest that, uh, item number eight. Um, present the findings from the inquiry posed to other North Carolina jurisdictions regarding public notification. I'd like to, uh, strike that item for tonight and move that to our next meeting. Since, uh, Mr. Meadows seems like, uh, he's got half this notebook left for us to do. Uh, so I would propose, uh, Conrad, that we move item number eight, uh, to our next meeting if there's no objections. So. Nah, I don't think so. It's just a recommendation. Is everybody, um, okay with that recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thumbs up all around. Item seven. U D O text amendments one dash twenty-two. Mr. Chad Meadows, we love that red hair and can't wait to hear from you. But you gotta make it fast, brother. We got an hour and ten minutes to go.
Well, goo- good evening, Chair Parker and Commission members. Uh, I promise, uh, I was, I was put under very strict orders to move this material along. And I realize that we have an awful lot of red line pages, but we are trying a different format and we're going to stay more at the thirty thousand foot level generally. And in, you know, if, uh, at the commissioner's pleasure, if you have specific questions, uh, we'll dive down into the details, but, uh, uh, I actually only have eleven slides for you this evening. So we hope to, to move right along here. So, uh, thank you. Um, do I, yes, I'm going to share my screen and pull up. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Fantastic, okay. Uh, this is U D O T A one twenty-two, and this is our review of, uh, of what's proposed here. So three kind of main topic areas to cover tonight. We want to share some quick information on where we've been, um, the reasons for text amendments, why we do them in the first place. Um, we'll talk a little bit about U D O one twenty-two, what's before us this evening, and then just a quick uh, overview of next steps. You guys are all old hands at this by now. Um, I like to think we're getting even better and better, more efficient with our time use. So, um, this is what we'll be talking about this evening. Um, where we've been. So I'm not gonna read this whole slide to you. This is a table, uh, that sets down the five previous text amendments to the U D O that have taken place, uh, since adoption of the document back in July of twenty nineteen. So we've processed, uh, five amendments over the last twenty-eight months. Um, there was one in twenty nineteen, a couple in twenty twenty, and a couple in twenty twenty-one. And we are before you tonight with the first of twenty-two. Okay? Why do we do these things? There's basically three purposes for them. First and foremost, we, myself, the staff, we're responding to requests for revision to the U D O from residents and applicants, um, in pursuit of community prosperity. In pursuit of the best development quality that we can find. And in pursuit of people meeting their investment-backed expectations for the land that they own. So that is our reason for these text amendments. There's a couple others. Sometimes, from time to time, uh, our friends at the General Assembly or, or with the federal government opt to change the rules that we need to follow. Uh, and so it becomes necessary for us from time to time to change our rules in accordance with the direction from them. And then lastly, um, just increasing precision and clarity. You guys have been around a long time. You know, uh, the things that we were attempting to accomplish with the U D O. We've made a lot of those accomplishments, but there's always room for improvement. I will note that planning staff has, um, brought several new, very bright, very experienced people on board. These people bring with them their experience from other areas, uh, and a keen interest in making sure that the standards are as effective as possible. Uh, so there is great interest on the part of the city staff to make sure that the U D O is precise, um, and has as much clarity as possible. Uh, so that, that's why we do this. Most importantly, you know, the tech, these text amendments, they're the direct result of staff's interaction with residents and the development community. Um, your city staff works with folks on a day-to-day basis. Folks come in with development applications, they're trying to utilize their property, trying to make improvements. The vast, vast majority of those applications can be processed and reviewed without any issues, problems, changes, et cetera, to the U D O. Now, as you know, there are some applications that present greater challenges. In those cases, city staff works with those applicants to try to figure out the obstacles that are facing their development proposal. And frankly, in some cases, um, those obstacles are the U D O itself. Um, and when that happens, um, the staff works with those applicants to try to balance their needs against the city's policy guidance. And every so often, we agree that it is necessary to adjust the U D O text. What you see on the screen here are twelve examples over the last twenty-eight months where city staff has worked with developers, applicants, residents, whomever, to try to improve the U D O language. And I know you guys remember some of these. Um, we had a lot of changes to ease redevelopment in the central business district in terms of allowing ground floor residential, removing density limitations, getting rid of open space requirements, et cetera. Um, you know, we've reduced side and rear setbacks in the medium industrial district. You know, we've allowed taller fences outside setbacks and limitations on, removed limitations on access to industrial lands. We've rounded density up, we've allowed a lot more flexibility in time, in terms of sign size, uh, sign placement, uh, for ground signs, wall signs, et cetera. So these are all examples of the staff working with applicants to craft the U D O in a way that meets policy guidance, but also allows them to develop their property, meet their investment expectations and foster, you know, community prosperity. So that's a very important reason why we're here. And I just wanted to be sure that you guys were aware of that. Um, there's a few, uh, there's a few examples of, of the legal compliance side of things. Um, you know, back in twenty twenty, uh, there were a couple of changes from the General Assembly with respect to written notice of decision, performance guarantees. Obviously, we had that big package of changes with the one sixty D requirements. That was all six hundred and some pages of the U D O. So a lot of changes in there. Uh, the read sign rules, stormwater, et cetera. So, you know, we've had a, a lot of work to do based on, you know, top-down kind of policy and rule changes from higher levels of government. So plenty of, of those examples as well. Tonight, U D O T A one twenty-two. This is our sixth text amendment, um, and we're continuing the tradition of, you know, fostering community prosperity, addressing legal requirement changes, increasing precision. There, there, I'm sorry, questions? By the way, if you have any questions, please, uh, stop me. I'm absolutely, uh, able and willing to answer any questions whenever they come up. So please do stop me. Finally, thirty-four areas of revision. Uh, like I said at the head of the conversation, we're not gonna make you guys sit through a hundred and fifty-five pages of red line. Um, we're gonna cover this stuff at a high level. If you have further questions, uh, or want to get down into the details, uh, I can pull up and display the red line from the particular page, uh, if you have, have questions about that. So with that, I'm gonna get started. So the first nine changes under U D O one twenty-two all deal with community prosperity. They all flow from staff's work with applicants and residents. Um, so limited use zoning is one of the big ticket items that staff has been hearing from um, residents and, and developers and applicants. Essentially, the limited use zoning form of districts, it's a new class of parallel zoning district. They allow applicants to reduce the range of allowable uses, okay? All other district standards, dimensional requirements, any other development standards that might apply to a particular conventional zoning district would continue to apply to the parallel limited use zoning district. Why are we proposing this? Because we've had lots of applicants come forward. All they want to do is follow the district rules, but reduce the range of uses. You guys know the legacy of conditional zoning in Burlington and some of its unique idiosyncrasies. Um, the limited. Um, the limited-use zoning district approach allows the U D O to come into closer alignment with how other local governments across the state do conditional zoning. And so that's why it's proposed here. Um, again, it allows an applicant through the conditional zoning process to reduce the range of uses. No site plans are allowed, no designs are allowed. It's just reduction of the range of uses, and you have to meet all of the otherwise applicable standards. So limited-use zoning district trying to bring us into the twenty-first century. We've had a lot of conversations with folks across the community who are operating manufactured and mobile home parks.
Chad, Chad, can I, um, please? Talk a bit about limited-use zoning?
Absolutely.
All right, um, thi- this is a new concept to me, so I, I don't have any background here. Um, two questions really. The first one, you said that this is becoming a statewide or even national standard. Um, just could you tell us a little more about how widespread this is used?
Absolutely.
Question, can you give us some specific examples?
Sure. Um, so basically, pi- pi- pick a government, any government located between Greensboro and Raleigh, and explore their conditional zoning standards, and it's essentially a limited-use zoning district approach. And what I mean by that is this, most places use conditional zoning to place further limitations on the range of allowable uses or the forms of development that are permissible in a parallel zoning district, okay? So that conditional zoning district is a tool to fetter discretion or lower development potential, okay? Via an applicant-sponsored condition. Burlington's legacy of conditional zoning is a hundred and eighty degrees the opposite. Back in the day, conditional zoning was used as a means to reduce standards, to increase the range of allowable uses, to do things that weren't necessarily allowable, but you could uh propose a condition and, and seek to mitigate and, and go above and beyond the minimum threshold. This limited-use zoning district approach is the, i- it's in the a hundred and eighty degrees in the other direction. It doesn't allow applicants to request deviations or reductions to standards. You still have to meet all the dimensional requirements. You still have to meet all of the otherwise applicable development standards. What it allows you to do is simplify your application. You may simply say, I'd like to have H D R, and all I want to do is put in rental housing, and that's it. And that, all the other uses in my limited-use H D R district, I'm prohibiting. And I'm, I'm not going to allow multifamily. I'm not going to allow the range of uses that are otherwise allowable in H D R. I'm limiting my range of uses in my li- limited-use H D R district to just rental residential, just to kind of pick an example that I, that I watched earlier this evening. That's how you would use this tool. Does that make sense?
That sure does. Thank you for clarifying that.
My pleasure.
What, is it, is that uh written on a certain page that you've given us here?
Uh, it, it absolutely is. It's, it's written on a handful of pages, actually. Um, and I'm happy to go over all of those pages if you'd like, or we can just kind of, I can tell you the ones where, where it shows up in your ordinance. So we've clarified the limited-use alternative. Can you see this, by the way? I'm sorry if this is a little bit small. I'll make it a little bit bigger.
Uh, you might want to zoom in on there you go.
Yeah, I, I know that can be a problem sometimes in, in technology. It's just not all it's cracked up to be. This is page two dash fifty-two. It's the rezoning procedure. Um, this is the procedure that sets down your options for conventional rezoning, conditional rezoning, or now uh the limited rezoning option. So that's set down here um on this page. This is page two fifty-three. It's the next page in the, the rezoning uh procedure. It basically specifies that limited-use rezoning is limited to uh reduction of uses and may not include a graphic or a site plan or anything like that. We wanted to be very careful in just limiting this to the range of uses. And all other things in the applicable parallel conventional zoning district continue to apply. It's necessary for us to establish the limited-use districts like we do any other zoning district in the U D O. I'll note for you, there are two districts that do not have parallel limited-use district partners. The first one is P C, Parks and Conservation. The second one is R M H, which is residential mobile home or manufactured home. So the, this table is on page three dash five. It is the district's established table, and it sets down the, you know, what, twelve limited-use districts that we're suggesting be, be formulated. Next in line is the actual limited-use zoning district discussion itself. Um, you'll note in your U D O in chapter three, there is a series of pages that deal with conditional zoning districts. This is the page that deals with the limited-use zoning districts. It's on page three dash fifty-five, and it specifies some of the exact same things I've mentioned to you before. Parallel, all the basic requirements apply. Applicants are allowed to reduce the range of allowable uses. You can't provide graphics, et cetera. So this is the gist of the limited-use zoning. Um, we also uh have a definition, obviously. Um, so that's included as well. Questions on this one?
I have a very-
I'm sorry.
I have a, I have a very general question. When you said that this was all, it came about with input from the community, uh, where did that input come from? Was it equally among developers and builders as it was residents? Or were those who answered your requests of a particular group?
That's a great question. So um, I, I, while I think the initial request or the desire to have this kind of zoning is probably triggered more from applicants than it is from residents, I think when you think about this tool, um, it's actually a little bit easier to understand from the perspective of a layperson, simply because it doesn't offer that wide range of variation and, and a possibility of change to, to minimum requirements. So it's a little bit easier to understand an application that comes forward that says, hey, I just want to do rental single-family home, you know, subject to the district requirements. I don't want to do, you know, what could potentially be, you know, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-five different uses on this piece of property. So the, the thinking is that this approach will make life a little easier for Burlington residents because it does simplify the rezoning process, brings it kind of down a level in terms of its complexity um and focuses solely on uses and, and continues to, to apply the same minimum dimensional requirements and development standards that would apply to any conventional zoning district. So, long answer, short answer, mostly development applicants, but there was discussion, consideration, and anticipation that this will be even more helpful to residents.
It, it, uh, you know, when you were going through things quickly, it did look like you were narrowing down the type of um construction or building or zoning, but it looked like within that, there was pretty wide berth to do what you wanted. Am I correct in that?
I, so essentially, let, let's walk through maybe a hypothetical example of this. So I'll go back to the, um, I'll go back to the low-density residential limited-use district. So inside the low-density residential district, there are a range of use types and dimensional requirements that are available. And anybody who requests a rezoning to L D R, if that's a conventional or a quote-unquote straight rezoning, then you have to consider the full range of allowable uses permitted in that district, and there are some basic dimensional requirements that would apply. Now, let's say I wanted to do a limited-use low-density residential district. In that instance, I, as an applicant, could come, submit my application and say, I only wish to do two of the fourteen different kinds of use types that are permitted in the low-density residential district. So I am voluntarily limiting via a condition the, the types of uses that would be permissible on this property if it bore the low-density residential limited-use designation. All of the dimensional requirements that apply to that use, if it was in the parallel conventional low-density residential district, still apply under the limited-use alternative. What's different is that the full range of use types normally permissible in L D R would not be permissible in the L D R limited-use version. Only those uses that the applicant has said, I wish to have, uh, are permissible. The applicant would specify uses that would be prohibited in their L D R district, and those uses would not be allowed unless the property was rezoned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Like I said, this is much more akin to a traditional conditional zoning approach that's used, uh, you know, i- i- in Alamance County, used in Durham, used in Raleigh, used in Greensboro. This is much more akin to that system um than, than Burlington's current conditional zoning system, which is a little unique.
Good question. And let's move on to the next, next topic.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, I'm going to go back. I, I'd started to talk about the manufactured and mobile home park standards. So hey, we had several conversations with folks across the city who operate these parks. Clearly, this is a very important part of affordable housing for residents of the city. Um, there were some concerns expressed by the folks who run these parks in terms of changes to the U D O that were made back in twenty nineteen that maybe might have limited the ability of these parks to be established or grow or change. And so we entered into a discussion with them about their thoughts, and those discussions yielded four or five basic changes, and here they are. First, we put together a series of new use standards for manufactured dwelling parks. Manufactured dwelling parks are pieces of land that allow two or more manufactured home units on leaseholds inside that property. They are not on individual lots. They are on leaseholds, okay? You can do that kind of a use in the C R, the conditional residential district. It's the only place that you can do that. You do not have, the city does not have any manufactured dwelling parks today, okay? The city does have mobile home parks. What's the difference? A mobile home park can have mobile homes and manufactured homes. A manufactured home park can only have manufactured homes. What's the difference between the two? Good question. Manufactured homes bear a sticker from the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department that exempts them from State of North Carolina Building Code requirements, okay? Every manufactured home constructed after nineteen seventy-six bears this sticker and is exempted from North Carolina State Building Code requirements. Mobile homes, on the other hand, are likely to not include the HUD sticker, are subject to the state building code. And we often find that mobile homes have a tendency to be um twelve feet wide uh or, or, or less. Uh, so they're more narrow than twelve feet typically, okay? So those are the distinctions. We created standards for the manufactured dwelling park because we didn't have any. Those standards mirror the requirements for the mobile home park, so they're very similar in nature. We also changed the non-conforming use provisions, okay, in Article Nine. Now, the current standards allow these mobile home parks to replace an existing mobile home or manufactured home that's non-conforming with another non-conforming manufactured home, subject to some limitations, subject to some requirements, okay? Such as, at currently, it says that manufactured home has to be sixteen feet wide. That manufactured home, let me go ahead and pull this up just so that you've got it in front of you. I will cover this. Bear with me while I bring this up.
Chad, you said you only had eleven slides. That's more than eleven, buddy.
Well, these are slides I wasn't going to show you, but I'm trying to-
We, we did, we did our best, as you can see.
I, 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 you, they tried to rein me in, guys. I swear they did, and-
They did a horrible job.
If I'm giving you a lot of detail, just tell me.
Wild animal, this guy.
He's not showing you those, yes.
Yeah.
Come on, Chad.
So the, the idea here is allow these non-conforming manufactured or mobile home parks to continue to operate, to allow units to be moved out and brought back without any sort of encumbrance by the U D O, okay? Um, provided the total number of spaces that they're approved to have are maintained, provided they uh continue to operate with, with homes on these parks, then we have tried to put the standards in place that allow them to shift homes, spaces in accordance with demand. You don't get more than you had when you were approved, but you can move them around, and we're not going to penalize you if you want to move an old one out and bring her, bring a newer one in. And that's really the gist of the standards, okay?
What page is this on in our uh handout?
That is a very good question. Um, so these standards are on the non-conforming, um, the non-conforming use provisions, which are in chapter nine. So this will-
What was sent to them, on what was on their packet, Chad? Comment, can you pull that up?
Sure, let's see here. And just so you know, some of these were also included as a follow-up email based on Chad, Chad and I's conversation with the, on Friday. Let's see, oh, let me go to the agenda packet here.
So I'm happy just to read these things in, instead of-
Sure, absolutely. So these, these provisions, what we're discussing with this mobile home stuff is on page. Let me get to the non-conforming section.
Nine point three.
I like that. That sounds good.
Okay, nine point three, okay.
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 So that's where this material is. Good questions. Going to press on. Site plan exemptions, we broaden them if a existing structure is occupied by a new use that was the same use as, as was there before, uh, and there's no changes to parking, landscaping, stormwater, et cetera, then that use should be allowed without a site plan. Um, so that is a suggestion that we just have a zoning compliance permit for those instances. We wanted to simplify the side setbacks, reduce them from twenty-five feet wide down to ten feet wide in recognition of the interest folks have to establish duplexes in some of the more intense residential districts. So that is a change, um, reducing those for duplexes. By the way, in the districts where this is proposed, those setbacks are reduced uh to ten feet in accordance with what's required for single-family homes, all right? So they're not going any lower than what's allowed for a single-family home. Outdoor storage areas, what are they surfaced with? We're suggesting the standards be revised to allow outdoor storage to be surfaced with gravel instead of just dirt or instead of making folks pave it. So uh, change there. We've made a handful of changes, um, reductions in the range of commercial design standards specifically. Simplifying the fenestration rules, the amount of windows or glazing that are required on, on primary and secondary commercial building walls to exclude things like eaves, dormers, mansards, et cetera. So trying to make those requirements easier to follow, easier to understand, but still provide us with glazing or windows on primary and secondary walls. Some adjustments to the canopy limitations. Now that we're in the time of COVID, we're seeing a lot of use types that may have had a canopy, a single canopy in the past, now looking to have more than one canopy on the site. So what we're trying- So what we're trying to do there is allow canopies to be detached. We've removed the maximum size of an individual canopy in favor of a cap of total square feet that can be occupied by a canopy. We've, uh, modified the parking standards to allow uses like restaurants that are removing their indoor seating uh, to use a different parking standard than we might have applied at the time that the building was built. Multi-family development has some massing requirements in the, in the multi-family design standards that required second and third stories to be set back from the ground floor story. After a lot of discussion, we've opted to move that requirement into an incentive for, uh, and, and include it with the sustainability incentive material. So it's no longer a requirement. However, if you in your multi-family development choose to set back your second or third stories from the first story, uh, you may get sustainability credits for doing so. We've added some additional flexibility for ground signs. I mentioned at the head of the conversation, there's been a lot of attention paid to signage and making sure that that's flexible and responsive to the needs of the development community. The ground sign flexibility provisions here, um, we're allowing slightly larger ground signs in the PD and PDD districts, more akin to the GB district. We're allowing signage to project past the base of the sign by six inches, uh, or less. Um, and I'll also mention to you that while we're incorporating sign flexibility for ground signs, we have also limited the ability to do ground signs on, on lots that have single-family homes on them. So if you're a single-family home with maybe a home occupation, you've got some other alternatives for signage. A ground sign is not one of them. If you are a commercial business operating inside what was a home um, and you are in a different district, then that limitation does not apply to you. Finally, open space set aside. That's what OSS means. Uh, we're clarifying that developments of five or fewer lots are exempted from the open space set aside requirement. That change is proposed frankly for reasons of practicality. If you have five or fewer homes, you don't have enough of a homeowners association base to cover the, the maintenance requirements for open space anyway. So we're simply suggesting that those smaller developments be exempted from open space set aside. So these are the nine basic quote-unquote "community prosperity" changes that we're suggesting. Changes that flowed from discussions with applicants about how to accommodate development on the lots that they already owned or developments that were already operating. We talked about the limited use. We talked about the manufactured mobile home. I moved quickly through the others. Does anybody have any questions on those?
No, keep plowing through.
Trucking on. Increasing precision. Not going to spend as much time with these. So remember, increasing precision is what your staff is all about. Um, love it. They love to increase precision, increase clarity. Um, there are 13 amendments inside UDOTA 122 that address the amount of precision or clarity in the standards. So let me just give you a couple examples. I'll pick on the review authorities changes. You may recall our dear friend Joey. Joey Lee has departed. We no longer have a zoning and subdivision administrator, though that position is referenced hundreds of times inside the UDO. Um, we are, we are suggesting removing references to, uh, zoning slash subdivision administrator and simply using the term planning director. Again, there's delegation provisions in Chapter eight that allow the planning director, uh, to delegate any, uh, function to a, a professional level staff member. So we're not too concerned that this is going to create any sort of trouble or problems, and it certainly simplifies the language. Other changes. Two rounds of text amendments ago, we inadvertently removed the dimensional standards for multifamily in the neighborhood business district. This was a mistake. Uh, your Eagle Eye staff caught this and said, where did the dimensional standards for multifamily in this district go? Um, that was an error and we have re-in inserted, reincorporated the dimensional standards for multifamily uses in NB as they existed uh, prior to the adoption of UDOTA 120, which is where they were removed. Um, a couple of the things I wanted to talk about, we're establishing a maximum number of axles for heavy trucks and trailers in residential districts. Uh, we have a gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds. If you have a truck or a trailer that's over 10,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, that's not something that you can park at your home in a residential district. Uh, this was proving problematic for enforcement staff. And so what we're suggesting is, in addition to the gross vehicle weight, a maximum limit on number of axles to two uh, and a maximum trailer length of 22 feet. So if you have vehicles or trailers that exceed those caps, then you're not permitted to park those on your lot in the residential district.
Mike, I have a question about this. Um, is, is this going to cause a lot of angst in, in some neighborhoods where we have these trucks and trailers already parked right now? Um, are you going to go out and tell them they have to move them? Or how are you going to enforce this?
Yeah, we're, as, as, we're under proactive enforcement. So if we see those, if this is adopted, we, we will go out and address those for compliance. We'll give them time to move them. But this is, this has come from neighborhoods. This has come from residents. Uh, we're getting, you know, tractor-trailers on streets, tractor-trailers on lots. Um, it still allows for larger vehicles, but not the tractor-trailer type in, in residential areas. Um, it was, it seemed to be becoming a more frequent than before, and it was feedback we got from, from neighborhoods about this.
Okay. Just, just interested how you're going to enforce it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll work, we work with people. It's not going to be day one. We give them time to comply, but it will be something we, we look towards.
Okay.
Still can have a larger vehicle, but the large tractor-trailers is what we're trying to address.
I got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Staff wanted more information on the roof form standards and how compliance with the commercial roof form requirements could be met. So we incorporated some new standards for that. We're clarifying that you don't get credit for invasive plants towards landscaping. So no need to keep those invasive plants. Um, additional clarification about how we measure wall signs specifically. We're seeing new commercial establishments, uh, like a prominent coffee vendor that happens to operate in, in Burlington um, that is sort of creating these vertical projections, their walls really, uh, but they're behind the facade plane of the structure, but behind the front facade plane, and they're used for the express purposes of signage. Uh, this was causing some consternation in how we apply the sign standards. So that is, uh, addressed through this change. We're clarifying that you can allow porch encroachments based on whether your porch is on the ground or above grade. Um, the amount of encroachment differs based on how far above the grade you are. Uh, greenway maintenance, you know, if you have a greenway and that's dedicated and constructed, that's the city's responsibility. It's no longer the responsibility of the developer or the homeowner association. So clarity up and down the spectrum here in terms of these standards. Um, again, based on discussions staff has had either with residents, uh, internally or with applicants, we're trying to just add some clarity and precision. So that's those provisions. I'm happy to answer any questions on those if you have any. Okay? Moving along, guys. We're almost done. Couple of legal requirements associated with UDO 122. Um, the General Assembly, uh, very, very recently, a couple of weeks ago, basically approved a bill that decriminalizes all land use and zoning related violations. So, um, a lot of complexity here. The gist of it is this. Local governments like Burlington who have enforcement requirements uh, and who pursue violators of the zoning ordinance uh, need to stay within the realm of, of the civil penalty rubric when it comes to enforcement. Um, criminal penalties for land use and zoning violations are no longer allowable. If there is a violation of a stormwater standard or a riparian buffer standard or a water supply watershed standard, those may still be pursued, uh, with criminal penalties. But every other zoning land use related violation is a civil penalty system. Not a whole lot of impact to you guys, but an important change from, from the statute. So we are carrying that forward. Also, masonry skirting, um, if you have a manufactured home in a manufactured home park or a mobile home in a mobile home park, uh, the, the General Assembly has barred local governments from requiring masonry curtain walls or masonry skirting under those dwellings when they're in parks. And I guess the reason for that is that these, these units need to move in and out. Um, and masonry foundations or curtain walls, uh, confound that movement. And so the General Assembly preempted, uh, our standards, uh, and so those have been changed in accordance with that. Um, that's it for the legal requirements under this set of amendments. Any questions on those two? Chair Parker, this is slide 10. This is slide 11, my last slide.
Yeah, we see the logo. It's all over now.
That's right, baby. Uh, it's all over. Um, if there are any questions or comments, love to talk about those with you. Um, at, we anticipate going to city council, uh, for a, um, a detailed discussion of these provisions uh, in early January and then a public hearing in the middle of January. Um, and you know, we're getting ready to start it all over again with UDOTA 0222. Um, I would say that the city's pretty much on par, uh, in terms of the number of, of text amendments that it's processed over the last 28 months. Um, there is a great deal of complexity and an incredible amount of work that your staff has put in to try to listen to residents and try to listen to applicants, more so than is commonly, uh, seen uh, in communities the size of Burlington. So I think that, you know, you guys, your staff should be applauded here. Um, everybody is working to make sure that the UDO is functioning um, and that it's not creating obstacles, uh, but rather that it's creating solutions. And, um, everybody should be commended for that. And that, Mr. Chair, is all I have for you.
And Mr. Chair, we, we've received no comments, uh, from the public on this.
Yeah, we do all this work and you, you guys work your butts off and nobody ever acknowledges it or fusses about it much. But it's a lot of work and we appreciate all you're doing. Um, it's always good to see you, Chad, and we thank you for, uh, watching out for us and keeping us in compliance.
That's absolutely my pleasure. And, uh, I think it would be appropriate for you guys to, uh, make a recommendation so that we can pass that on to city council. And I'll just leave you with an anecdote I heard from a friend of mine who told me being a planner is like being in the CIA. Um, nobody has any idea what you do, uh, until something goes wrong. Um, and that's kind of what it's like to be a planner. So as always, thank you for y'all, y'all's attention. And, uh, I'll stand by if you have any other further questions.
Okay, so in light of all this, do I have a, uh, a motion, uh, concerning this item?
Yes, um, first off, I'd like to second all that. Thank you all for staff, your diligent work. And I really appreciate how you say this is a living document that will continually be updated. All right, so I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to amend the City of Burlington Unified Development Ordinance with the proposed changes. The motion is based upon the consistency of the pro- proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that Section Four Land Use Goal One Recommendation Five of the Comprehensive Plan calls for an update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Section Four Land Use Goal One Recommendation Five of the Comprehensive Plan calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. This action is reasonable in the public interest and its Section Four Land Use Goal Two Recommendation Four of the Comprehensive Plan addresses confusion, conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new unified development ordinance. Section Four Land Use Goal Two Recommendation Four of the Comprehensive Plan, a new UDO will be modern, graphically intensive and user-friendly from both a public, petitioner, and an administrative perspective.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lee. Are there any questions, uh, or comments concerning the motion? Uh, Mr. Black and Mr. Kirkpatrick, please turn your cameras on for the vote.
I don't know how.
Oh, come on, Mr. Black.
Hang on, I'm looking.
Push that little button.
I'm, I'm using my wife's. Shoot. Are y'all still, I, I'm voting for it, if that helps.
Okay, that helps. All right, all in favor of this motion, say aye. Any opposed? All right, you got unanimous approval, Mr. Meadows. So carry on, go to city council, and we'll see you soon.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Thank, y'all have a great night. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to skip the, uh, last, um, piece and, and put it on, uh, next meeting, uh, Conrad. So with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Can I introduce somebody real quick? Can I introduce somebody real quick?
Okay, okay, go ahead.
30 seconds. Beverly Smith has, has stayed on with us this evening. Uh, as you know, Wasi, uh, accepted another position a, a couple of months ago. She's going to be able to work home uh, remote with her, with her family, and we're happy for her on that. We're going to miss her. You know, she's worked with you all and done the minutes. Very pleased. Today was the first day, so we thought we'd bring her to this meeting. Beverly Smith. Hopefully many of you know her from working upstairs in administration, in city manager's office. She is now our senior administrative, uh, support in the office and just excited to have her. Just wanted to expose her to you. She'll be doing our minutes, getting her up to speed. And you'll hear and see her voice and face as we go forward. So Beverly, if you want to say hello, welcome to them.
Hey, good evening, everybody. It's nice to meet you via Zoom. I hope to see you in person soon. I've been with the City of Burlington since 1999. Um, there's a lot of knowledge in this head, but I'm learning more and more. Just tonight, I learned some things I didn't know. So thank you for, um, having me and I'm looking forward to this opportunity. Richard, I'll see you still. I just won't see you at city council meetings.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I want to know who's the new city clerk.
We don't know yet.
Are we about to hire one or not?
That process will happen, um, soon, and this opportunity came up. So I just took a chance and, uh, worked it out where I've interviewed and they, they, they actually were excited to promote me to this position. So
That's great.
Have a clerk process in the near future.
All right, well, I'm glad you're on board with us and, uh, we'll, we'll call you when we have questions. Okay?
Fantastic. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the board? Mike, you got anything else?
No, sir. Thank you for that.
Go ahead, Kirkpatrick.
Um, I'll, I'll wait. Go ahead.
Um, if that's me, um, I wanted to say I really was not voting on that last part on the amendments. Um, I don't know what position you take when you prefer to abstain, uh, just because tonight is my first night. And there was an awful lot in there that I had questions and I knew I'd be shot via Zoom if we went on any longer. So I really didn't feel as though I was qualified to, to vote on that. If that's not acceptable, I'll go with the group. But, um, I would prefer to be shown as abstaining.
Well, it's, it's a lot to take in for a brand-new member. Uh, we certainly understand that. We've been working on this thing for, what, five years now, I guess? And, uh, uh, so we, we sort of know what's going on, but it's awful, it's awful lot for a brand-new person. So by abstaining, you didn't change anything. So you're okay.
And I realize that, but I, I got the impression maybe it had to be unanimous. So.
And anytime you see Chad Meadows' name on the agenda, she gonna run long.
Oh, he did pretty good. He, he worked an hour.
He's probably very thorough, so that's good.
11 slides, 32 minutes. 11 slides, 32 minutes.
Yeah, I didn't want to make it 33 with another question.
Well.
And by the way, the agenda's never this full.
All right.
I second Bill's motion.
You second his motion?
Uh, Kirkpatrick's motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, next month, if we have a meeting, where would it fall? Uh, I mean, what's the date? I don't have a calendar.
I just, probably be the third.
The, the third, yeah, the third Monday would be the 20th, would be the third Monday. The fourth Monday would be the 27th. That's a holiday for some. So we, if we were going to have a meeting.
Be the 20th.
If that's acceptable to the board.
That's what I'm asking.
Mm-hmm. It's final staff. If we have items and we, and we'll know in the next, uh, It's final staff. If we have items and we, and we'll know in the next, what, two weeks or less, Conrad? If we have items, deadline will be here.
Is everybody okay with the 20th? I mean, it's by Zoom, so you could, you know, be at the beach and do this now. All right. So the 20th, it'll be the 20th next month if we have any agenda items and they'll notify us in a couple of weeks. Let us know. So any other questions or comments?
There's a motion in a second.
All in favor of adjourned? Say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That was easy.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
All right. See everybody soon.
Okay. Ending the meeting now, everyone. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.